So, to take a seat. We've got a great program lined up here. I'm going to say a few words about our organization, Capital Region Indivisible, and I'm going to read it right off our official description and then say a little bit more about it. We are a nonpartisan, all-volunteer citizen activist group dedicated to civic education and participation, ensuring our true American values of justice, fairness, equality, opportunity, and compassion are prioritized in a genuinely representative and forward-thinking government. So, that's what we're all about. We were an outgrowth of the Women's March right after the 2016, or 2017 inauguration. We've been together ever since. We meet monthly. We usually take off one or so in the summertime. We got all kinds of speakers that come in and educate us about the issues, educate us about how the courts work. We have candidates come in and meet folks, which is one of the most important things I think we do. And then, in election time, we lend our shoe leather and our phone and everything that we can do to support the candidates that we feel actually share our values. So, if you're not already involved with us, I encourage you to do so. We also, about twice a year, have great potlucks, which is a great way to get involved with us. We have really good food at those potlucks, so I would very much encourage you to turn out for those. And so, thank you very much for coming out on this gloomy Sunday afternoon. What else are you going to do, right? Can't do much outside, so come on in and get educated about the candidates. I'm going to turn it over to Kathy, who is going to introduce our moderator.
Hello. I'm Kathy Yorkevitz. I'm here to introduce our moderator, Morgan Plant. Morgan has been working in state governments and some federal issues. I'm sure she's a lobbyist. She's had practice for 30 years or so. She represents the good people. Yeah. She's done an incredible amount of work for things like help Access Network, Create Planned Parenthood, many disability rights groups. She's been very active on the Hill for many years, and she's very effective. And I'm pleased to have her today.
Good afternoon, everybody. And actually, I want to tell you this is the first time anyone's ever asked me to moderate candidate panels, so I'm going to do my best. And I would like the candidates for county commissioner, if they would please come up and join us. We have 10, maybe 11 candidates who are going to be with us this afternoon. And we have a timekeeper. Charlie Wilson is going to be trying to keep us on schedule so that we don't run over too much. But I anticipate that the program this afternoon is most likely going to last, I would say, maybe an hour and 45 minutes if we're really on schedule. And I will be asking questions that were developed in advance by members of the group. Thank you very much for having me, and I'm flattered to be asked. So, at this point, what I would like to do is to have our candidates introduce each other. And I will start with you, and I'm assuming you are Donald Travis.
Yes, I am. Can you hear this? Okay. Good. It works. Okay. So, you want me to start?
Yes, please.
My name is Donald Travis. I'm a Democrat, running for county commissioner. I grew up in Ohio. I earned a, my degree, my undergraduate degree in political science at Xavier University in Cincinnati, Ohio. And then, I earned a master's degree at the University of Louisville in local science. And then, of course, I finished off with a PhD from the University of Cincinnati. So, I hail mainly from Ohio. My father worked for the Treasury Department. Oh, okay. My father worked for the Treasury Department, so he moved around. We moved to Northern Virginia. I became familiar with that area and grew up there. Went to high school in that area. I have two daughters. My older daughter, right now, works for a restaurant chain called Chewy's. I don't know if you've heard of it, but I'm going to plug it. It's one of the, actually, one of the best restaurants in the United States. They opened up their 100th restaurant just a few weeks ago, and she's one of the trainers. So, that's why the comment that Jean Foshee had said at Dickenson College kind of resonated with me, because Reagan is a trainer of people at these restaurants. Isabel, my other daughter, she is going to school in Amsterdam, finishing up, in her fifth year, fifth year, but she will finish in a business degree and has learned the Dutch language and is bilingual. And so, I just wanted to kind of tell you a little bit about myself, and I'll pass it to you.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
Sure.
Everyone can hear me? I just want to say thank you to Capital Region Indivisible for the tablecloth in front of this table. I don't know if you saw the shots of the forum.
Yes, we did.
And obviously, whoever set that up is not used to wearing a skirt. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it. So, I'm Jean Foshee. I am running for Cumberland County Commissioner. I grew up in DuBois, Pennsylvania. I went to the Catholic school for 12 years. I have a bachelor's degree in political science from Penn State and a paralegal certificate from Penn State. I have a tremendous amount of experience in budgeting and in finance and in managing people. And so, I believe that I have the practical skills to be, to be an excellent commissioner for you. But more importantly, on top of that, I believe that I have the heart and the humanity to be your excellent commissioner. And if you read the Sentinel this week, you saw the article about children and youth services being on probationary status for a period of time. And I've said this for a long time, that your commissioner needs to be your lobbyist, and that's one of the reasons. Because one of the best things that could happen to children and youth is that they don't have to use the Civil Service Commission anymore to hire people. And there has been a push there for a long time. So, your commissioner needs to be able to get in there and get those kinds of things done for you and move that mountain so that you are better able to do your job and to deliver those most needed human services. So, I hope as you get to know me today, I will earn your support. Thank you.
My name is Michael Fedor. I'm also seeking the Democratic nomination for Cumberland County Commissioner. And I also want to say thank you to Capital Region Indivisible for today's forum. I'm running for Cumberland County Commissioner because I want to do something positive for our community. I believe that Cumberland County's commissioners have a role to play in continuing to build a community that is cohesive, that is strong, where people feel they have a place that they can call home, that they belong here, and that they count. My background is I grew up in Western Pennsylvania in a city called Newcastle in Lawrence County. Son of a working class dad and mom. My dad was a truck driver. My mom stayed at home with my brother Ken and I until we were about 10 or 11, and then my parents got divorced. Life got a lot more challenging for us. And it's that background, that experience of living on hard times and seeing what it's like to have community that supports you, it helps me understand why it's so important that we have commissioners who believe in community, who don't forget where they both came from, and will do things to ensure that those who are facing crisis, who often most commonly need the services that county offers, have someone there fighting for them. I graduated from Penn State University with a bachelor's in secondary education, English and communications. Went to teach public school in Lancaster County and loved it. Went on later to get my master's in human resources and employment relations with concentrations and negotiations organizational development. I have a background in not just being politically involved here in Cumberland County, which you know I have been as former chairman of the Democratic Party and also a borough councilman in a small borough in Perry County, but I've also been involved in helping elect other progressive Democrats to local office. And part of that resume of being a leader in our community is something that I hope we can talk more today about, why I feel like it's a good preparation for what our commissioners are going to face in four years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to give you a little idea of the rules that we have established, we have three county commissioner candidates with us today. Unfortunately, Kate McGraw, who is also running for county commissioner, is not able to join us today. I believe, actually, she has a concussion and needs to rest. However, what we are going to do, we have four questions that we will be asking the candidates, and we are asking them to answer in 90 seconds. We also have reserved time for some questions from the audience, which is going to be somewhat limited, just in terms of trying to get through all of the candidates that we have today. But I will start off, and I think we'll just sort of go back and forth. We started with you. So, Michael, why don't we start with you with the first question for county commissioners, which is, with Cumberland County being the fastest-growing county in the state, traffic congestion and its consequences will continue to increase. What actions or initiatives would you see to proactively address that issue?
Thanks, Hugh. That's a great question, Morgan. I appreciate you raising it. We've all been talking about the tremendous growth of Cumberland County, and I hear a lot of shared vision that we're going to make investments for the next 10 years ahead to make sure that growth continues to be a positive attribute, not a burden to our community. First and foremost, look to the fact that our relationship with CAT, Capital Area Transit, is strained today. The current Board of Commissioners has taken a much different approach than previous years in terms of our relationship with that bus company. And so, our service levels are cut, our routes are down, and more families are faced to either drive somewhere or find other means of transportation. So, we need to get back to the table in a productive way to make sure that we have adequate routing of existing transportation systems. Secondly, Governor Wolf, God bless him, he's committed to $660 million to widen 322 going to Penn State University. I'm a Penn State grad. I love going to Beaver Stadium for baseball, for football games. But we could use $360 million to widen portions of I-81, which is a major portion of our congestion and traffic. We talked about not just residents traveling, going from one community to the next, but the through traffic of freight that comes to our community. And finally, since I ran for commissioner eight years ago, you all remember I talked a lot about light rail then, and I continue to be a supporter of light rail. But we have to take advantage of the on-demand transportation economy here in terms of Uber, Lyft, and other private sector solutions, and I hope we can talk more about that soon.
Jean?
So, congestion. So, I don't know if you are aware of this, but federal law actually tells you what you need to do about congestion. And they go down through things like ride-sharing and public transportation and working from home. So, those are, those are important things. We already have the federal law that tells us what we need to do to take care of congestion. And on top of that, in Cumberland County, I really think that as your commissioner, we can push for some development that will put us in a more dense population. So, one of the issues that we have right now is that we are sprawled out all over this county, and it is very hard for public transportation to work. It's hard to get to a bus stop. It's hard to get around on a bus. It takes forever. And a piece of that is because we are just all over the place. So, as we grow and develop, as one of the fastest-growing counties in Pennsylvania, I think we could put some effort into planning so that we are planning up rather than out. We are planning so that we are working and living and playing and going to school in an area that is walkable and bikeable. And I think those would be good starts. Thank you for your time.
I think both of those answers are good, and I agree with both of them.
The, I had proposed at Dickinson, and I'm going to talk about it today, just briefly, trying to build another lane for our, for key roads, in particular with I-81. But if you do that, try to work in a high occupancy vehicle lane for, for that, and then work in some way to advance carpooling, as Jean had indicated, importance of carpooling. The slug system in Northern Virginia, this system where you can, if you live out in Northern Virginia, Prince William, you can park your car in a large lot and then stand in line, and a perfect stranger drives up in line, and you get into the car, and they drive you through the wormhole from Northern Virginia into DC and drops you off to where you can pick up other public transportation, like the metro, okay? That was started by a few individuals on their own initiative, okay? And once it got rolling and got starting, the word passed to other people, and now the slug system is essential. I would say that when you look at what we should do as leaders in the county, maybe try to advance or stoke that up and get somebody to promote that initiative. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Second question, and this time we'll start with you and go back down. The Greater York-Harrisburg-Levinning combined statistical area, which includes Cumberland County, ranks as the 15th worst area of the country for high year-round concentrations of particle pollution implicated in a wide variety of diseases. This accounts for the very high incidence of chalk foot asthma in Cumberland County. The pollution stems from the heavy volume of truck traffic in the area. What will you do to address these urgent issues as a county commissioner?
You know, I saw a little information about Joel Hicks's study on his 30-30 plan. Joel Hicks is, he's a citizen of the county. He's working on his PhD. His dissertation and all this study is devoted to this very issue of the particulates. I live in the borough of Carlisle. My partner, Terry, she and I have to deal with what, all the crud that comes on our house. Everybody here knows that they power wash the outside of their house if you do own a single-family home, frequently retain them. We know how bad it is, but it gets on our cars. When you're talking about Joel Hicks, this idea of reduction in the amount of particulates 30% by 2030, some people will say, "That's just pie in the sky. You know, why are we even wasting our time?" No, I think if there's an international agreement, a national agreement, if there's an initiative or a vision somewhere that's promoted by other people, I think it's important even for county government to sign up for it, to be proactive and say, "We are an entity as part of the state of Pennsylvania, and we're going to join maybe with other counties to promote the idea that we need to do a whole host of things to reduce our carbon footprint, to reduce the amount of particulates in the air." Like I've said before, Cumberland County is blessed with location that it is, in between all these highways, and it's cursed by its location in between these highways, and we get the full brunt of, of the pollution. That's why we need to be proactive and support anything.
Jean?
So, 90 seconds, huh? Okay. So, one of the things I think we could do is enforce our idling law. We have a no-idling law. We ought to be able to enforce it. I think that would help a lot. Think we could get involved with the Keystone 10 Million Trees Project, and we could really be planting trees. And it helps to bring those particulates out of the air. Those particulates hit the trees, they're washed into the ground, and at the same time, our groundwater is being cleaned. I think that's another thing that we could really be involved with. You know, the county is an instrumentality of the state, and until the state gets on board with cutting fossil fuels, I'm not really sure where we're going to get in terms of highway transportation. At the same time, though, Cumberland County does not need to hang out and wait for the state. We could adopt our own clean plan. We could go through our own carbon plan. Harrisburg University is in the process of putting together the study so that municipalities can have their own plan for clean energy. For example, as we buy new cars for the fleet, we buy electric cars. As we build buildings, we get some solar panels up. But I'm interested in the Harrisburg University plan. When it's done, they are willing to share it with every municipality in the Commonwealth, and I think that that's a powerful partnership, and they are just right across the river. Thank you.
Very important issue. When you live in a place like this, that is the intersection of the on-demand economy, we are seeing the impacts on our air that we bring, that we're raising our children in. In my program, Cumberland Grows, I have identified two specific examples of where Cumberland County can take action on this issue. First of all, diesel engines are the real heart and problem here, both long-distance diesel engines and short-delivery diesel engines in our community. So, Cumberland County ought to take a leadership role with the six higher-oriented institutions and our high schools to ensure that the zero-emission freight industry takes hold, takes root, is born here in Cumberland County. Peterbilt, Kenworth, Tesla, major manufacturers of freight trucks and engines, have all committed to zero-emission freight vehicles in this decade ahead. Some of them are entering production next year. Why are they not going to be the trucks used to deliver the freight here locally in Cumberland County? We're going to need the charging infrastructure, number one, to ensure that happens, both at the point of loading those trucks at the warehouses that we've all watched be built in our community, and various stops along the routes across the community, when the drivers have to stop for lunch, or they have to take their mandatory breaks. But we can do that. We can make those investments. And secondly, in Cumberland Grows, I call for Cumberland County to make its contribution to the planting of trees effort that Jean highlighted by planting 10,000 trees in the next four years along our rivers and streams as those key pieces of filtration, not just for air, but for water quality as well.
Michael, hang on to the microphone. We'll start with you for the next question. Cumberland County is experiencing a high rate of growth in both commercial and residential property development. What is your position on tax abatement as a means to attract commercial development? What do you see as the county's role in shaping or controlling development?
It's a really important question, and it's, tax abatement has to be one of those tools in our toolbox that is used sparingly. Why? The community that I was raised in, Newcastle, shows you the example of why tax abatements can be a bad idea. They use them to attract the business in. They're there for the duration of that abatement, and once that, that tax forgiveness is up, they're up and gone. They'll go find the next community that's willing to give them another abatement, and it's a no-win deal for our communities, especially in communities like ours that rely on property taxes to fund our schools and our local governments and our community services. So, what we need then is a more comprehensive development plan that's going to attract, again, commercial properties and residential properties in a way that makes this community grow in the strong, smart ways, and isn't just, you know, developing our land in a land rush, thinking that all property, or that all development is good development. What we'll sacrifice in the process will be what makes this community so great to live in the first place. We'll lose that intrinsic sense of place if we continue to develop at such a rapid pace that there is no clear sense of what is Camp Hill, or what is Carlisle, or what is Silver Spring, or what is Shippensburg. And so, we need to maintain that sense of identity. We need to work cooperatively. Again, county government is one system of government that we have. Local government really is where the rubber meets the road in terms of zoning and allowing or disallowing for development. And so, Cumberland County government has to be a partner and a resource for people serving at the local level.
Jean?
I think tax abatement has to happen on a case-by-case, in a case-by-case way. In Carlisle, there's a TIF right now. It's working very, very nice, very, very well. If you watch Real Sports with Brian Gumbel, though, I watch it, they, recently, two different things have happened. One is in Scotland with Trump, where the Scottish, the Scottish government gave Trump a tremendous tax abatement, and he abandoned the project that he said he was going to do in Detroit. That billionaire family that built the stadium promised all kinds of money and all kinds of building around that stadium, and it hasn't happened. So, if we do something like tax abatement, it has to be on a case-by-case basis. We better do our homework on it, and we better hold that corporation, that entity, responsible for what they're doing. I think it's a tough call because it does take money from our schools. It takes money from our municipalities, and I'm not sure that every corporation out there needs tax abatement to build.
Okay.
I agree with both of those answers. Well said. This is an issue that the Republicans will defeat the Democrats in November. And I'm just reminding Michael and Jean of this, because I know they know this, I know most of you know this, but I'll just articulate it now. They're going to say that we need to reduce taxes, get rid of property taxes, come up with other ways to fund. And responsible Democrats, as we are, are far more responsible than any Republicans, will say, you know, keep taxes lower toolbox. I agree with Michael 100% on that. Let's look at the real estate transfer tax. You know, in Pennsylvania, it's 1%. Some localities here in Pennsylvania like to increase the property taxes to get a little more revenue for the county. My position is do no harm, okay? If things are working, leave it alone. Your question was couched, how can we reduce taxes? I fall in line with these, these two to my right. I agree with both of them. I am resistant to raising taxes, but to lower taxes is a hard deal if we have so many things that we need to do, especially the infrastructure repair and, I mean, all the other issues that you've mentioned on, on your list of questions. Funding libraries, you know, funding the nursing homes, you know? I mean, there's a lot going on, and I would say do no harm. Don't raise taxes. Use the money we have in a better way.
Thank you. Hang on to the microphone. Come up next. Okay. This is the fourth and final question, and then we will have time for, I believe, three questions from the audience. The Cumberland County library system, and in terms of full disclosure, I should say I am a member of the Cumberland County Library Foundation Board, provides critical educational, social, cultural, and community support services. The county's library tax rate currently stands at .023 mils. In addition, the county makes conditional grants for the library system of $100,000 annually, beginning in 2018 and going through 2020. Do you believe this level of funding is sufficient for maintaining optimal, optimal operations for the libraries through 2022? And if not, how would you seek to address the shortfall?
Okay. My direct answer to your question, without going around, being around the bush, is, you know, I don't know the answer. I don't know whether current funding is proper. I'll defer to the two candidates to my right on that. I use Frederickson. I use Bosler. This is an excellent library system. I would, I would say that before I would want to answer that question, in, you know, May 5th, Cinco de Mayo of this year, I would like to talk more with library personnel. I'd like to get a little more into that issue, and I haven't done enough research on it. But I use libraries frequently, often. The Rude Hall Library at the War College, but like the other two that I mentioned. This Frederickson down here is just a beautiful library. We need to, at least at minimum, as I put in my answer, we need to maintain it and, and not lower the funding. But I suspect that if there's a justification for increasing funding, I would like to look at it. But right now, I, I'm not going to give you a definitive answer to that question, but that's the best I can do.
Jean?
One of the things I like so much about Don is that he's willing to say, "I don't know, but I'll go figure it out." I respect that very much. The mileage for county libraries is .166. So, I'm not, that number that you gave is not quite right. I called the county. I've been through this extensively with them. We've talked about it. So, it is .166. And then, so the county takes that, you know, we pay the tax for the library, and then the county also offers $100,000 a year in conditional grants to the libraries, and those libraries have to meet certain conditions. And one of those conditions is that they have to go and raise their own money. And that has worked very, very well because our libraries are doing an excellent job of raising their own money. I love the partnership between the two. I think it's a really good idea. As the library system says, the libraries are an investment for life. I use the libraries. They are used for far more than books. People go there to use computers. People go there for programs. People go there to socialize. They are very, very important. And as your commissioner, as I dig into the budget, I would have a better answer for you. But I'm not sure if the funding is appropriate at this point in time.
Thank you very much for the question. As a former English teacher, libraries are near and dear to my heart, as you can imagine. I'm not allowed to go into most bookstores because I just love books. But let me tell you something about the library system. One area that I disagree with our governor is continuing to zero out state support for local libraries, and that needs to change, number one. It's the reason we have our own assessment for libraries. It's the reason why we are constantly trying to pick up the change, to figure out how we continue to fund our system. What we have in place is getting us by, but it's not adequate. And it's partially not adequate because the state has taken its money away and its support away. We've had to cut. We've had to find ways to still keep it moving, but it's not at a level where you would say that our level where you would say that our libraries are this vibrant community center, which they really need to be, especially for young families. My boys, Jackson and Parker, love going to the library. They're proud of their library cards. But we also love to go to the special nights where they have readings for the kids, or the special programs in the summer. It's another way for parents who don't have affordable childcare to have another place where they can have their kids be in a safe, caring environment while they're trying to work. So, you know, do we raise the mileage? I'm open to that, because .166 is a steal compared to what we get already from our library systems, which are county-wide system, and open to every resident. We need to do more to make sure they continue to be a vital center for our communities.
Thank you very much. All right, we have scheduled time for three audience questions. And again, the candidates will have 90 seconds to respond. So, do you want to, Kathy, are you going to bring the questions up, or have people?
County Commissioners, climate change is the issue of our time. As a member of the Cumberland County Commissioners, what are your plans for addressing this emergency at the local level? And Michael, why don't you start?
Absolutely. Absolutely a priority for me, an issue I've worked on for a long time, and I'm angry that we haven't done enough, and now we are now in a crisis moment, because we've kicked the can down the road for 15 years, and now faced with urgent, dramatic action, which we were all saying was going to be necessary if we didn't act in 2007, or 2010, or 2011. So here we are. Joel Hicks is a really thoughtful leader in Carlisle, as Dawn mentioned, who's got a plan for Carlisle. I'd like to see our communities make investments and commitments to reducing their carbon footprints. Cumberland County Government is a major property owner and is a major employer itself, and it should also conduct an energy audit. It should understand what its energy footprint and carbon footprint is, and make commitments to reductions. And then we've got to work with the state. I applaud the governor for his entrance into the Climate Action Network, and for us to find a way to ensure that Pennsylvania, although historically an old energy state, is going to be a leader in this decade ahead. And he's going to need partners at the county and local level to stand up and call for dramatic and important action, and I will support that. I want to see, as I called in Cumberland Grows, investments in a local sustainable agriculture movement as well, which has contributions itself to sustain, to a sustainable green economy, and to addressing global climate change by investing in keeping our food and our resources local. And there's many other ways, but this is an issue that, in my heart, is an absolute priority, even of just county commissioner.
So I personally know that climate change is the most pressing problem that we have as humanity at this point in time. 100 years from now, the only place we're going to be able to live is Canada, if we don't get a hold of something now, if we don't get on this now. So as your Commissioner, I am committed to changing the way the county does business so that we are, we have a fleet of cars that are electric, we are using solar panels. As we build, we're building in a way that is, we have combined things, we can combine our services in one area. It's critical, and I am very serious about that partnership with Harrisburg University to come up with a good municipal plan, a good county plan, to go ahead and tackle our carbon emission issue in the county. Thank you.
Dawn?
Yeah, I was, I was once a Republican, but this is going to show you that I was never really a good Republican. I should have been a better woman. If you recall Al Gore, his movie Inconvenient Truth, I once rented it, both of my daughters, they were around age 12 and eight, they were about 12 years apart. And I played that movie over and over again over a weekend, you know? You've got the TV there with the kitchen and so on, and my daughter's there. I watched it over and over again. I believed it then, actually, these climate deniers out there. This is what I think distinguishes a Democrat, mainly is one of the distinguishing factors of being a Democrat versus a Republican. Democrats, again, going back to philosophical pragmatism, okay? Facts are facts. We look at data, we can see what's happening. You look around the world, okay? As county commissioners, I'm going to go back to what Gina said on a previous evening. Commissioners should also be lobbyists. You know, this is kind of a transformational way of being a leader of a county. Not only lobbyist for what she had discussed at Dickinson regarding all the host of issues, but lobbyist to promote the ideals and the issues of climate change, because we are also on the receiving end of all the ill effects of climate change. So as a county commissioner, I would advocate that whoever makes it into that seat, they are the lobbyist, the advocate, and we'll listen to Joel Hicks.
Thank you. Hang onto the microphone. Okay. This next question isn't really phrased as a question, however, I know that all of you are up to responding to it as if it were a question. And this regards to Masterton. Please encourage use of smaller buses and more frequent stops every 15 minutes throughout the boroughs to Harrisburg. Also, use the parking areas along major highways with the bus stops at the parking areas. Use of those huge buses is unnecessary, for they are nearly empty. It's small buses that come frequently would build ridership. We need to do whatever we can to reduce global warming. Getting cars with individual drivers off the highway will be very helpful.
Yeah, this was brought up at the firehouse in Carlisle a few days ago, and I learned a lot. And of course, listening to Mr. De Filippo and Mr. Eagleberg talking about it, yes, smaller buses, that was discussed. I think this is common sense. Waiting longer at the stop, but also doing a survey to find out if the stops are the best locations, okay? The more frequent stops. Apparently, whatever we have in the county right now, just kind of like, just was running without any assessment. So that's another thing that I like to promote, is the idea that any, any program or any kind of money spent, the commissioners need to work in a way to assess whether that program is running or not. And this is a perfect example of that, that apparently these buses have been running for several years now, and only three people would get on a gigantic bus, and it would spew out all that pollution, and it's been going on and on and on. I would say that this is a good issue that we need to bring out in the fall as well. Why did you let it go on and on and on and not understand that it wasn't working? Because obviously, it wasn't. That's all.
Gina?
So, as Dawn said, he and I were at events, at an event in the Fire Hall in Carlisle, and this, same thing, someone in the audience asked this question. And our commissioners said that they were interested in what it sounded to me like was a private venture, possibly to replace what we have now with smaller buses. So in the fall, we ought to remind them of that, right? And see where they are with that matter. You know, the Harrisburg Area Transportation System has done a transportation study. There are all of these beautiful things written down to talk about smaller buses and how we're going to handle things. And once again, I come back to, you need a Commissioner who is your lobbyist, and who knows how to move a mountain and move people along. And I think that that's one of the critical things you should look for in the candidates here. Who, who can move people along? Who can go get things done for you? Thank you.
I'll highlight three areas. Number one, Cumberland County used to have a transportation department, used to provide transportation to our senior citizens in the county, until they decided to outsource that to rabid transit and sold our small buses. And we, once again, took away a way for people to travel their community, and handed it over to another agency in another county where the service just isn't as good as it was, and they have absolutely no control over the types of vehicles being used. So another example of how we need to be leaders and not just outsourcing. Secondly, let's remember, too, we've talked a lot during this campaign about the fact that Cumberland County is 64th out of 67 counties in getting our fair share of state tax dollars back. For every, for every dollar we pay in taxes, 57 cents makes its way back into our community. And that's because we have nine legislators in the General Assembly who are pretty comfortable, never feel like their job is at any kind of threat. So they're not out there hoofing it to try to get money back to our community. Where would we spend the money? We could spend the money on finding more suitable, smaller vehicles, maybe have a county transportation department again. And how about our schools, who outsource their bussing? And they're driving giant diesel buses around, our kids are breathing that in. If we could retrofit those vehicles to be on zero emission or natural gas, or something that is far less polluting than diesel engines, we could make a noticeable improvement to the health of our children, too. But we need leadership. We need partnerships. We need people who are out there hungry for it and trying to find the money to bring back to our community.
Okay. Thank you very much. Not seeing any additional questions. I think this concludes the county commissioner segment of our program this afternoon, and I want to thank all of you, not only for being here, but for running and for paying attention to the needs of local government in Cumberland County, where I lived for four years now, too. So thank you very much, and if our district attorney candidates could join us.